Clerk Nelson, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Karen.
Here.
And location?
Marshall.
Councilmember Gates.
Here, Marshall.
Councilmember Rice.
Here, Marshall.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here, Naples, Florida.
Councilmember Traver.
Here, Marshall.
Councilmember Underhill.
Here, Marshall.
And so member Wolfersberger.
Here, Marshall.
We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you. We will start this evening with invocation by Chris Tarkowitz of Family Bible Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in prayer if you choose. Heavenly Father, tonight we pause to quiet ourselves and give thanks for a new year, new opportunities, new beginnings and new possibilities. As we move into 2021, I may the lessons from this past year, both the pains and the joys, guide us and move us to care well for one another in our thoughts, in our words, in our actions. We pray that peace and love would motivate us and move us. We pray your blessing upon the city of Marshall, Mayor Karen, each of the council members, and all those who serve the city and call Marshall home. Please use this leadership to guide, direct, empower and care for those they represent. May what happens here tonight and in this coming year bring hope and encouragement and a bright tomorrow for each person. We pray this in Jesus's strong and powerful name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible liberty and justice for all. All right, we will start this evening with the approval of the agenda. We have public comment on agenda items, followed by the consent agenda. Under item 12A, under reports and recommendations, we have fiber net rates. Item 12B, we have the Marview number two subdivision with three separate motions. There 12C, we have the 2021 water and sewer rates. Under 12D, we have the solid waste contract. 12E, we have the Marshall House broker. 12F, we have finance and accounting services. 14, public comment on non-agenda items, followed by council and manager communications and adjournment. And I would like to remove item 12D from the agenda, the solid waste contract, as we have not finalized that contract, gotten that contract from Granger. So any additional comments, questions, additions or deletions to the agenda as amended? All right, hearing none, I'd seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
My commotion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
We have a motion by member Wolfersberger, support by member Schwartz. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yeah.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
And Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so for a maximum of five minutes, seeing their name and address for the record. Please indicate that you would like to speak either by making a comment in the chat function or raising your hand.
I don't see any, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Item 7A, we have to schedule the public hearing for the adoption of the July 1, 2021 to the June 30, 2027 capital improvement program. 7B, we have the street administrator designation. 7C, we have the police officer weapon purchase program. 7D, we have the city council minutes from the work session on Monday, January 4, 2021, and the regular session on Monday, January 4, 2021. Item 7E, we have city bills totaling $1,546,356.17. Any questions, comments, additions or deletions to the consent agenda?
If, if we could have an explanation, just, I understand the street administrator is largely a, it's a requirement by the state. I'm just wondering if we could have someone address what that designation does.
I'm sure I can. Every city who receives Act 51 weight and gas tax monies, the state requires a person be responsible for paperwork, et cetera. Over the years, it typically has been the Director of Public Services. When Kristen Bauer had the position, she was street administrator. Prior to that, Carl Fetters, and then when Kristen left, I was, I took that over. That was before Marguerite started. And then we're just moved it over to Marguerite. So it's basically they sign the quarterly reports that have to go up to end up for funding.
Thank you. All right, any additional questions? All right, hearing none, I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by member Gates, and I'm sorry, I didn't see who the support was from.
Brian Underhill.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yeah.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
And member Gates?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That takes us to item 12A on the agenda, fiber net rates.
Any, as you were saying, any introductory remarks, Tom?
Go ahead. You can go ahead, Ed.
All right, thank you. Evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Let's start my video here, there. It fills you, fills it out. Give me a little history on the fiber net, particularly for councilmember Rice. The city of Marshall has been historically underserved with high speed or just speed internet, the speed of internet over the years. And that was mainly due to the fact that the larger telecommunications companies were more focused on the larger cities, more revenues coming out of more densely populated areas than what in Marshall was really on the back burner and continues to be. So in the spring of 2015, at a city council during a strategic planning session, identified fiber to the premise, FTDP, as a key objective of theirs for the city. So that started a lot of activity that went on for almost two years because we had to go through what was called the Metro Act, that state legislation that caused a lot of requirements on municipalities from developing a fiber net system or any kind of a communication system, telecommunication. But part of that, part of that effort during, during that two years was we had to develop a cost benefit analysis. And, and we did. And it had to be publicized and approved by us, certified by an accounting firm, Baker Tilly did ours. And that was presented to the city council at a work session on March 11, 2017. Then following that, at a regular meeting on March 20, the city council moved to accept the cost benefit analysis, which included a 10% inflationary rate increase in year three of the implementation. And also on March 20, the CC approved a resolution authorizing engineering construction of the fiber to the premise project and also approved the use of inter fund loans to finance the new project. Remember, this is like a new utility. The utility didn't have any financial means to begin with, so we had to borrow money from other city departments to get it started. So then following, it's still in 2017, on August 8, the city council at a regular meeting approved the rate, a rate schedule for residential and commercial customers, and that's been in effect since that time. There was a minor adjustment because some smaller commercial customers would take the service if we could offer them a little bit better package, and that happened. So we're, we're in year three now, and that's what we're trying to adhere or want to adhere to the cost benefit analysis because we, also in year three, we're expected to start repaying those loans that we borrowed from. See, we borrowed from the electric fund, the general fund, wastewater, and the LDFA fund totaling $4.2 million. So that's the money that's old, and we really need to start paying that back. All those, the electric fund, I would like to see it be paid back, of course, and so would the LDFA, all those funds, with the general fund. So what we did next, and that's just most recently, we, the fiber net staff performed a sensitivity analysis to say how to, you know, what would be the most likely best outcome for, to have a 10% increase in the rates. And what we concluded was that just to, to raise the tier one and tier two residential rates by the 10% and leave the others alone. And that sensitivity analysis is attached. I don't know if, Eric, you can put that up. Maybe we could just go over just a little bit to see the reasons why that occurred. If you can't, I can just, I could just explain it, and that's, it's okay too. But based, okay, you can say that the proponents of our customers down in the lower box residential tier one and tier two is made up of those tier one, tier two customers. We have very few commercial, which we're trying to focus on, and very few overall residuals tier three, four, and, and five. So our analysis, a lot of discussion was that it would be just best to increase tier one and tier two, and, and that would net us about $70,000, $80,000 overall for to be able to begin paying back loans. And because our concern was if we start impacting any of those commercial customers or the lower numbers in the residuals, the tier three, four and five, then they could drop off and maybe go someplace else. And that would really, you start dropping those large paying monthly customers off, and it takes a while, takes a lot, puts a lot of pressure on, reduce our actual annual savings. That's our thought, at least, on it. So we, you know, we recommend it, that's our recommend, going to be our recommendation this evening is to increase the tier one residential, tier two residential, tier one residential from $40 a month to $44 a month. And as for 50 megabit, megabit, megabits up and down, and tier two, that's for 60 megabits up and down from $60 to $66. And again, that'll net us about $80,000. We do have some other initiatives underway. We'd like to really, within the next few months, almost double that. We've got some other things we're talking, talking to some of our suppliers on how to reduce the cost and like to add another 60 or 70,000 to the 80,000 that, that we're going to get out of this, that we could possibly get based on your approval out of this rate increase. So that's, that's the rationale of where we are. I know rate increases aren't always, always mostly appealing thing. But again, this was in the cost benefit analysis to do this, to, to increase the rates by 10% and to be able to repay those loans. We just can't go on indefinitely and, and not pay the money back that was borrowed in good faith. So, so the recommendation is to, is recommended by the fiber net staff that the city council adopt the resolution attached also, which implements an increase in the residential tier one and two, tier one and two to a service rates for the fiber net project for the 2017 cost benefit analysis, and this will be effective on February 1 of this year. Any questions?
So the, I understand, I still think that the timing of this is unfortunate, but I, I understand that, you know, financial constraints are what they are. We need to move forward with paying, you know, beginning to pay for the system we implemented. I do have a concern with an effective date of February 1. It's a very short window to communicate a rate increase. Do we, do we feel we can effectively communicate that out to people, you know, in, in that time?
I can, because again, we do a broadcast and say it's going to happen, but again, it's a good point there. Councilmember Wolfersberger, in that we probably would be better served to let it go another month, but it, just to let it, let people digest it better than just, here it is, and it's going to happen basically tomorrow.
I was going to bring up the same suggestion that on the next bill, they are notified that the next bill would be an increase, not just hit them with an increase on the next bill, but give them at least a month, a monthly lead to know it's coming.
It's, it's good, positive direction.
I have a question not related to the two increases, but I thought we had a commercial client at the 10 gigabyte rate.
We were told, we were told that the, that customer was going to take 10, but they decided on one, one gig. At this point, this is one of our new customers in the area. And I wouldn't be a bit surprised sometime down the road that they do get to 10 if they develop as they, as they've indicated.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Hi, Ed. Just briefly, under the 2017 CBA, you know, you, you talk about the 10%. And that CBA, was it 10% only for tier one and two? Or is it, as you explained earlier, the fact of it might push some other customers away? And can you explain just a little bit more about how competitive we are with those others?
To answer your first, first question, the CBA indicated 10, 10% across all tiers, commercial and industrial. And again, when we, we started rolling this out, we had a high focus on the residential customers and kind of let the commercials customers, because we wanted customer count back in 2017. And we got a lot of residential customers, but in the meantime, the competition had rolled in and locked up some contracts with our, with, with those commercial customers. And we're waiting for those contracts to expire, and then we, we have ongoing communications with them on a regular base. So we just didn't want to, we didn't want to impact them negatively at this point when we may be talking, much rather just say this rate's going to be than rather than increase the rate and then ask them to join up with us.
And I fully agree with that, but my, the second part of that question is, on our commercial side, we are very competitive with, with what else is out there?
We are. If you look at the total package, you know, you see a lot of advertisements coming, coming around, and they'll talk about, you know, 100, 100 megabits. But then there's a lot of fine print, may not, it only applies to certain areas. And also, that's usually just the download speed, doesn't include upload speed, which is really becoming more and more important on a daily basis with people working from home and virtual schooling. And you build a, you need to be able to transfer files to other entities. And that's what, that's where the upload's important.
Okay, thank you.
Ed, were, were there any other increases built into that cost benefit analysis three years down the road or anything like that?
No, no, we're going to let this, we're going to let this, no, it's, this was going to be it. Although I want to, let me, let me, I want to, I have to look at the cost benefit analysis to guarantee that. I didn't see any other ones back. I can't remember any other ones down the road. This was going to be able to pay back the loans. And we also, we, we got to be real careful on our rates because we are in a competitive environment.
Yeah, I was noticing, it looks like, wow, is it $29 for their lowest tier? And AT&amp;T is at 45 as of what I was able to find today. So we're, we're still in there for that entry level tier between the two, I guess, at 44. I do hate to kind of raise it in the middle of a pandemic when a lot of students are schooling from home, but as Scott said, I understand the financial reasons for it.
Yes.
Ed, I know you brought this to us, you know, late last year, and we had some concerns about the actual system. There were some issues with some, you know, service customers. And since, since I think that's been worked on, I've, I've seen a big improvement in the service. So I appreciate you, you know, working with your team to get that adjusted. So moving forward, we can feel, you know, good about making this increase and continuing to offer the best service we have. So just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ed regarding the fiber net rates? All right, hearing none, it is recommended by the fiber net staff that the city council adopt the attached resolution with implements a 10% increase in residential tier one and two service level rates for the fiber net project per the 2017 cost benefit analysis. We're going to make that effective March 1, 2021.
So move.
Support. We have a motion by member Traver, support by member Gates. And clerk, will you please do a roll call vote?
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yeah.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
And member Rice?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That moves us to item 12B, the Marview number two subdivision. Tom, will you get us started with this one, please?
I'll kick it off. It's going to be very much a team effort, which this whole project has been. So I want to thank all the staff getting to where we are. It's, it's quite an accomplishment to do something for the first time, which this is the first time in the state of Michigan that the Neighborhood Improvement Authority, the Tifa, is being implemented. So we are first, just like public education was here, and a lot of other firsts were here in Marshall. So you're going to be dealing with three different subjects. One, approval of bids, approval of a development agreement with the developer, and also the notice of intent, so of selling a bond. So, Marguerite, do you want to go first?
As you have in your report, we received bids for the construction of Rebecca Street, also known as Marview number two subdivision. The area was plotted back in the 1960s and just never built. So we started this process in about August of last year with Norfolk and their consultant engineering Kevs. We, we received final plans in November 17 of 2022 and proceeded with preparing contract documents and issuing the project for bid. We had a lot of positive response with 11 bids, which is great. And those bids were opened on January 11, 2021. The bidders and pricing is as shown in your report, with a low bidder being Quality Excavating of Marshall for a price of $546,506. So we will look at the recommendations later, but the first recommendation we're asking is for the approval of the award of this construction. This was reviewed by the South NIA, and they approved, recommend, they approved it for recommendation to you, I think is, is the wording. So that's the construction portion of the projects, of the project.
So we can take questions now if it's about the bids, or we can take it totally, maybe at the end. Let's maybe have John go next. John, if you would talk about the, the bonding of this project?
Yes, um, what the resolution does is gives, Clerk Nelson, the authority to publish the notice of intent to issue bonds to not exceed 900,000. And within 45 days after that publication, 10% of the elected voters could gather petition signatures where we would have to put it on a ballot for everybody to vote on. If you look, I believe Marguerite's construction cost is $795,000. So we're probably going to sell right around $800,000. We're still waiting on final issuance costs, but that's what the plan is. And we'll probably sell these bonds sometime April 1. On the resolution also, basically names Benzinski Company as our municipal bond advisor. And it also names Bill Danoff of Miller Canfield as our bond counsel. Be happy to answer any questions.
Let's, let's go to the development agreement. Eric, you want to take that?
Sure. So Marguerite gets to have fun spending the money. John gets to have fun selling the money. I got to figure out how to pay for it. So that's what we're, within the development agreement, is to set out the structure of the responsibility between Norfolk Holmes and the city and the NIA. As you can see with the 800,000, approximately, the debt, we have a debt service table that's included in your packets. We have a gap in certain years. So instead of the city absorbing that cost, Norfolk Holmes, as part of this development agreement, has agreed to cover the deficit until the tax capture is sufficient enough to pay the debt service every year. Then also, whatever the balance that they have paid after those first few years, which we anticipated on their construction schedule to be about $37,000, we'll pay them back probably year six through 10, unless, the faster they build, the better off we'll be, because the taxes will gain faster. So in the development agreement, which we spent several months on, staff and attorney Revere working with Norfolk Holmes and their attorney covers all of these things. The infrastructure that Marguerite's building, Ed's electric and fiber net, so the new roads, the new sewer, et cetera. The developers' responsibilities mentioned in there. So they will be paying for the sidewalk within the project specific. They will also be paying for some sidewalk that is on Jones and Circle Drives to connect it to Hughes, so that makes that project walkable. So kids in there can walk over to Hughes School, which was a high priority within the NIA plan and also in your plans, in the master plan. The developer also, as we talked about, has incurred, while having incurred costs to date to get to this point, initial costs, those are theirs. That's mentioned in the agreement, also talks about their responsibility to cover that gap. Start date, they need to have, we anticipate being done by June 1 with construction. They need to have homes started by then. That's what they've committed to in the agreement. They've also committed to having that first home completed by the end of the year. Now, I think, I believe they hope to have that more, but what they're committing to is wanting to start beginning the year. The schedule of development is in there, so you could see each year where they talk to their committee to four homes, four homes, four homes, three homes, until they get the 19 lots built out. Now, with this plan, they're planning two-story condominium units. So two, a duplex, two-story duplex on each lot. So you're looking at 38 homes, which does help out the tax capture a lot. As part of the development agreement, they will be in front of you and the NIA annually to give an update on their progress. And, you know, we'll also be able to cover where we're at tax capture-wise, everything else. And as I mentioned already, the key for us, I think, is we're covering ourselves by their handling responsibility for that debt service the first few years until the tax capture is sufficient. So that's the. So that's the mean, otherwise there would be on the potential on the city to cover. So. We believe with this agreement, we are covered to the best of our ability.
The NIA. Approve these agreements, the bids. There's also. Council member Underhill sits on the NIA board is also one of our attendees, attendees Lucy Blair. So I'd like to thank them also, but we're open for questions that we can do before you hopefully approve this.
I do, I just want a clarification. The. The surplus that Norfolk home pays in the first, looks like five out of the first six years. As the tax capture exceeds the necessary. Bond payments, we're going to repay Norfolk for that?
Yes, that was negotiated as part of the agreement. Basically. The NIA is covering the entire cost of the infrastructure for the project. We are just not, they're, they're fronting the cash, but they're not receiving interest on that initial payments.
Okay. Is there a. Time limit for that? If, if, you know, if they, for some unfortunate reason. You know, take ten years to build these, these first units instead of. You know, one or two. You know, is there, is there a timeframe where that provision dies or is that as long as the NIA exists, that agreement exists?
The term on the agreement, I don't turn your reports on as well is the length of the bonds.
That's correct.
So it's, it's in their interest to build faster. Because then they're not on the hook for that debt service payment and we'll have that capture that can. Make the debt service plus pay them back for whatever they've incurred. And remember, it's only on the infrastructure portion. We're not paying them off their initial costs.
Right. Okay.
Any additional questions?
Just a comment. Thank you for prioritizing walkability and making sure that we get sidewalks in that area to connect up to Hughes School. I appreciate you keeping that goal in mind.
Guess there's another part of that is. What they're not putting in with their not responsible for, we are covering the rest of it. So we're getting out to Kalamazoo. As part of this project. So Margaret has that priced in there. So there will be true walkability for that neighborhood.
All right. So if we go to the first item, which would be approving the contractor, I don't know if you want to expand on that anymore, Marguerite. I know our lowest bidder was quality excavating of Marshall at five hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and six dollars. We got quotes all the way up to one million seventy-three thousand dollars. So I'm excited that the low bidder is a local company. But anything else you want to add to that?
Only that we included contingency like we always do for a total funded amount of six hundred and one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
All right. So then the recommendation would be to approve the award of the Marview number two subdivision, street construction to quality excavators, Inc. of Marshall, Michigan. In the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and six dollars with an additional contingency of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. For a total of six hundred and one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
And move.
Or.
We have a motion by member Gates, support by member Underhill. Any additional comments or questions at this time? All right. Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote, please.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yeah.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Rice?
Yes.
And member Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you. The next recommendation is to approve issuance of capital improvement bonds in the amount of. An amount not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars over a fifteen-year term with the first four years consisting of interest-only payments.
So move. Port.
We have a motion by member Traver, support by, what's that, member Underhill? All right. Any additional comments or questions at this time? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Member Underhill?
Yeah.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
And member Traver?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The final recommendation is to approve the development agreement, phase one. In substantial form between the city and Norfolk Homes of Allwin Downs LLC and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
So moved.
So move, support.
We have a motion by member Gates, support by member Traver. Any additional questions or comments at this time? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Member Wolfers?
Yes.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
And Traver?
Yes.
And member Underhill?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you very much. It's an exciting project for, for us to be involved in. I'm, I'm, you know. Glad that we were able to take advantage of this tool that the state gave us and we'll continue to keep everyone updated on the progress. So. Next, that moves us to item twelve C, the twenty twenty-one water and sewer rates.
I'll turn that over to Marguerite and then I know Erin and Alec are in the wings if needed. So Marguerite, please.
Yes, thank you. As we discussed in the work session before the last council meeting. We have presented here the resolution for the increase in rates for water and sewer. We conducted a rate study with the Michigan Rural Water Association. Earlier in the fall of twenty twenty. And. Using our planned projects or required projects, improvements at plants and other areas where we need to. Do capital expenditures and also. Preventative maintenance, we have come up with these rates needed to continually responsibly fund our departments. So tonight we're asking for the approval of that resolution, of that rate increase per the resolution. I won't read each line to you. If you have a question or a specific one, we can talk about that.
All right. Does anyone have any questions this evening for either Erin, Alec or Marguerite? I just wanted to thank you again for the informative work session before the last meeting to help us kind of go through these different changes and rates and. Answer all of our questions. So any additional questions at this time?
I did have a, one of the things we talked about in the. In the workshop was, the work session was to. To communicate this and the role that the, the state mandates. For the lead, lead service line identification was playing in this increase. And I haven't seen any of those communications. And again, we're, you know, twelve days away from February first, so I'm a little concerned about that timeframe for this as well.
Right. Typically, we wouldn't. Put those communications out until it was approved by council. So that was. The reason for not communicating anything at this point.
Do you, do you feel you can get that information out? People see this on their bills?
Yes, I believe so. Um. Yes.
I just had one comment before we vote on this and. I wasn't able to be heard in the work session. We were talking about it before, but in terms of the, of the tiers and just sort of the philosophy that we want to approach our rates with. In terms of users using less volume. Paying more per unit of water than users paying in dust, you know, using industrial volumes. I, I think. Given that we're going to be looking at this issue again in a year, I would just ask that we continue to think about our philosophy. I personally might like to see a little. More of a. Flatter tier structure so that, you know, families and individuals aren't essentially paying more for. Their water by volume than our corporations in the city.
Okay, noted.
All right. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions at this time? Hearing none. The recommendation is for the council to approve the attached water sewer rate fee schedules for. Implementation on February first, twenty twenty-one. These fee schedules include increases for city and township users and all meter sizes of commercial and industrial properties. Seek a motion?
Oh.
Support. Give a motion by member Underhill, support by a member Gates. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yeah.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
And Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That will move us to item twelve E on the agenda, the Marshall House broker.
Go ahead and start mayor and council members. Every year, the council meets with city staff and usually with a facilitator to look at strategic goals. Look at core services of the city. And one of the ones that have been talked about over the years is, you know, what are our core services? And the Marshall House comes up as a question. And so. We have been researching, actually John Bartlett, myself, I think it goes back to two thousand eighteen, talking with HUD. Talking with different communities. And what we're presenting you tonight is a first possible step. By the potential of selling Marshall House and having someone else run it as a section eight housing. And what we're asking tonight is that you allow us to put out an RFP. For a real estate broker that deals specifically in section eight housing. I'm going to turn it over to either John or Eric or both of them. They've been sort of the lead on this, so I'd like to let them. Talk either one of them on this, whoever, whoever wants to.
Well, you kind of took the, you got the, went out of my sails there, Tom. But yeah, what we're asking for you tonight is to. Approve the release of RFP for brokers. This does not. Put you in any requirement to actually move forward with the sale. Basically brokers get paid if they sell it. So if we go through the process and it's not something that you're happy with, you have the full authority to say. We're not comfortable with any of the offers we're passing at this time. So John and I have had the opportunity to meet with a few brokers over the last. Year. And we, there are definitely some interested parties in the, in the packet. We talked about. You know, potential pricing. And if you are in some client, we have a draft RFP already put together. That if you approve it tonight, will go out tomorrow, also including your packet or a bunch of FAQs. For anybody who has questions and that is supposed to be a living document. So as different questions come up, we will add to it. We are also scheduling meetings with Marshall House tenants to talk through this, through this issue with them. So they're very aware of what's going on. And we don't intend to have any surprises and obviously our priority is. From what we've heard from you is to maintain Marshall House. Liability as a section eight, not to have somebody coming in just to market rate. So. That is what the intent is. I think that's what we put in the RFP. That's our priorities. And from here, just we go through the process. John?
Pipe in that we have met with staff, so they're fully aware of what's going on. Pipe in again. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we were looking at a sale price of. Four million dollars, thereabouts. Now we've put in a new parking lot, new elevators. We're looking at, I think, between eight and eight and a half million. It's viable and the way we're going to use the interest and endowed the funds. It's a legacy for Marshall for a long time.
While at the same time protecting our residents. So I mean, that's a, I think would be, not to be trite, but I think it would be a win-win for all parties.
Yes, the section eight contract will run from until twenty forty.
Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Heard any questions from council members this evening?
I appreciate the FAQ that was provided that, that answers a lot of questions I had. So hopefully public can review that as well. And like you said, a living document. So as more questions come up. From meeting with tenants or, or anything else, it can be added to that document. And I believe you'll be posting those to the Marshall website as they're updated.
Yeah, if you, if you so choose to move forward, we'll have a, we have a page ready to roll or created. That basically will contain all the information as we proceed. So people will see the RFP, they can see their replies, they can see the offers when the time comes, the FAQ will be there. Any piece of information related to this process, we want to be as transparent as we possibly can. So everyone understands what the intent of the city is and as we move forward.
All right. Thank you. So the recommendation is to approve the release of an RFP for a broker that would represent the city and a possible sale of the Marshall House. Seek a motion?
Support.
All right. We have a motion by member Wolfersberger. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear who the support was from.
Sports.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yeah.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
And member Gates?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. How that moves us on to item twelve F on the agenda, the finance and accounting services. Tom, if you could get us started with this, please.
Yeah. Over my career, forty-eight years career, I, there's reports you really don't want to write. But sometimes you have to and. And John Bartlett has informed us that he's going to be retiring at the end of the month and. So we all have spent a lot of time with John and with his career with the city and also with the county. We are going to have a gap of. Time that. While we, you know, advertise for a looking for replacement for John, that has already started. Oh, I've met with John several times. Seems like a lot this last week, two weeks. And we made contact with three firms that could provide governmental accounting support to us. We received a proposal, our proposals from the three firms. We've looked them over and tonight we're recommending to you to retain the Woodhill Group out of Royal Oak. A person we would be dealing with is actually out of the Ann Arbor area. This person would be available to and as a needed basis. They would not be managing the staff, but would be working on the deficit elimination plans that are due at the state. Be it investments, be it looking at project funding, the high level financial work that John does, the day-to-day management of the office will be done by current staff. So Woodhill has provided us with a proposal. I would call it almost a worst-case situation because there's many things in there. After meeting with John yesterday for a couple hours that we can be doing that we would not be asking the Woodhill Group to do. So they would be available. The person we're dealing with has over 25 years of governmental finance experience. Comes highly recommended. And so we're asking to retain the Woodhill Group to help us out through this period where we will not have a finance director. We think this is going to be about 60 days, but it's until you get the applications and you, you don't know for sure. Now I'll be glad to take any questions.
Has there been any options discussed internally about managing this workload with current staff?
Well, it's not the workload, it's the expertise that is needed to do some of these things. We do not currently have staff who has the expertise to, to do these functions.
And just to piggyback on Councilmember Traver's comment, this was one of the things that, that caused me out of concern. And I did reach out to this city manager and thank you for taking my call about the importance of, you know, keeping that cost to truly things that we cannot cover. And the day-to-day operations will be covered by internal staff and managed by the treasurer, I believe, Tom?
That is correct, yes.
So we are having that, that some type of oversight within the city while working with, with the outside firm. So thank you very much for that explanation, Tom.
You're welcome.
Trying to do the math and the hourly rate and on an estimated 60-day agreement, can you tell me what's, in here, there was possible additional items costing up to $80,000? What those additional items were?
In the three proposals, each firm gave us sort of initial budget number. And those numbers were, excuse me for not watching, looking at the camera, for anywhere from 36 to 45 to 45, but one of them mentioned they might be between 45 and $80,000. One of the firms, not Oak Hill, Woodhill Group. Woodhill is saying they're estimating about $36,000 based on their hourly rates. And the other two firms, these rates, as you can see, their proposal are 125 to 150. A lot of the other companies' rates start at 155 and go to 320 and $375 an hour. So Woodhill Group is a group of retired ex-governmental accounting people. So they're, they have not the high, large companies that have high overhead and highly paid principals. So I don't know if that answered your question, Councilmember Traver or not.
It did. And I have one additional question. Is there a, with the sad news of Mr. Bartlett retiring, will there be a cost savings internally with his salary coming off the books next couple of months that could offset this cost for an outside firm?
I'd like to tell you that would be the case, but I don't think it will be. I did not get into what John's owed for vacation and sick and other items. Of course, our city employees do not make those hourly rates. So there will be an increase. You know, I can't say exactly what it would be, but I, I'd like to, over the time period is, you know, let you know how we're doing. And then, of course, to tell you a final result now. But no, it will, it will be costing us a little bit more than what John's costing us, so.
Any additional questions this evening regarding the finance and financial and accounting services proposed?
I don't, I don't have a question. I'll just say thank you to John for your service and I wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you, Scott.
I will miss John because he's my only Michigan guy in around City Hall now, so I'm on my own now.
Yes, John, it's been great working with you. Appreciate all that you've done for us and helped set us up for, you know, continued success. So we, you know, certainly hope you enjoy your retirement and hope to see you around here occasionally.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, the recommendation is to accept the proposal from the Woodhill Group of Royal Oak, Michigan to provide finance and accounting services. I'll move. We have a motion by member Gates, support by a member Underhill. Do a roll call vote, please.
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underhill?
Yeah.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
And member Rice?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. How that moves us to item 15 on the agenda, public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so for a maximum of five minutes, speaking their name and address for the record. Please indicate you would like to speak by either raising your hand or commenting in the chat function.
I see Mr., yeah, Mr. Adams is raising his hand, I believe.
I've asked him to unmute. Okay, Barry, you're unmuted. You can go ahead.
Ari, are you there? Can you hear us?
It shows them as muted, but one second, he does have several sign, um, use, he signed on several times, so maybe he's.
One of his connections, I see that Mike is muted. He's on there three times.
Yeah, I've asked all three to unmute, so. I'm not sure what else we can do.
All right.
I am very low on that one.
I'm sorry, Eric.
I said it was the one that just went on.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Barry. Please go ahead.
Sorry for the delay. I put on, on your chat section, some relevant case law that should deal with the bicycle ordinance that you are attempting to enact. And the Michigan Supreme Court has, all the way back in 1901, declared that while a bicycle is a vehicle, it is not one to be classed in all its methods of use with other vehicles drawn by animal or mechanical power. So there seems to be a bit of usurpation by trying to blur the line between motorized or a motor vehicle and non-motorized vehicle. And trying to attach the liabilities of the motor vehicle code to a bicycle rider is a tremendous overreach. Also, when you say things like, no person shall operate a bicycle or an electric bicycle in a careless or negligent manner likely to endanger any person or property. Or no person shall operate a bicycle or electric bicycle at a speed greater than it's, is reasonable and prudent under the conditions that exist in. Those are very vague. Who is to make the call on how careless is being careless or negligent? Or what is less than reasonable or prudent? A BMX rider has different skills than a four-year-old just learning to ride a bike. And I, I don't know what makes people, when they make legislation, they have to go to the extent of saying the hands of an operator of a bicycle or electric bicycle shall be on the handlebars at all times, except when the act of signaling. Now, where has common sense gone in America? Is it going to get to the point where we're going to start to regulate the operation of walkers and crutches? And high heels? How far does this go? The motor vehicle code was designed to regulate vehicles that were involved in commercial activity. And this is one of the great usurpations is that we've all been tricked into believing we have to have a driver's license when we don't use our cars for commercial purposes. And it seems that the progression of this legislation is going in a direction that our children and grandchildren will sincerely resent. And I left a letter there to be read into the public record, but I guess that's not going to happen. And when it comes to the garbage contract, let that go down the drain. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Barry. Do we have any additional comments, public comments on non-agenda items this evening? All right, hearing and seeing none, we will move on to council and manager communications. Member Traver?
Just well wishes to Mr. Bartlett. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Schwartz.
Right, John. Thank you for all your years of service. I, what, 20 years together there at the city of Marshall? Or at least it seemed that way. But no, you've done a great job and, and we appreciate all that you've done. And, and maybe you'll, we'll see at Woodhill. That's where all the retired financial people go, so.
As long as it's in Ann Arbor, that's fine with me.
There you go. But seriously, thank you very much, John. Appreciate it. I have nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jim.
Member Underhill?
I just want to say inside for the progress of the NIA district, John, to echo everyone else, thank you for the, the time and effort with the city. You did, you did with the city. Go Blue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wolfersberger.
All right, thank you. Um, we did have some activity at the planning commission. They are, the MPM is moving forward with the, with the hoop houses. There were some, some concerns voiced. I was, I was thoroughly impressed with the planning commission members and their attention to detail and, and the thoroughness with which they were familiar with the materials. It was, it was, it was very impressive. So we did have a meeting earlier today of the Northeast NIA. And we did start that progress move, or brought that process moving forward to begin developing single-family homes on East Drive. You know, still some hoops to go through there, the rezoning of the property and still some, some details to work out with streets, for they want to go behind with the driveways. So still a few things happening there, but it was, it's, it's progress anyway. So lots of exciting things happening in Marshall.
Great, thank you. Member Rice?
Um, I just wanted to say good luck to John and go Packers.
Thank you.
And member Gates?
Yeah, well, as everyone else has said, John, thank you so much for your service. It's been great working with you and very best wishes in your retirement. I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Clerk Nelson.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Tarkwitz.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, John, thank you. Best, best wishes and hopefully we'll see you soon. Thank you, everyone, for your time this evening, and I will call this meeting adjourned. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.